And I do want to make sure we get to all of these tonight. So let's go ahead and start with the supported employment for workers with developmental disabilities.
Thank you, Council President. For the record, I'm Nancy Carlson and I am the director of -- I'm sorry, I'm the administrator for Human Resources and Risk Management. And I wanted to -- tonight I'm also joined by Brian Sandler, who is here in the office and is a Senior Human Resource Analyst with our office, and also by Heather Evan and Nikki Wagner, both of Highline Community College, sitting here in the front row. I'd just like to give a little bit of a background on how we got here tonight. A few months back, Brian came to talk to me and asked if the city would be interested in sponsoring what is called a Supported Employment Program, which is a program that assists individuals with developmental disabilities in finding and maintaining jobs in the community. These are not made up jobs, but they're real work that needs to be done by the employer. I'm not going to go into a great detail of how you get one of those -- put one of those jobs together, because that's what Heather and Nikki are here to do. But this particular type of program, it caught my attention, and so I decided to take the issue back to Mayor's Staff Meeting and see what the rest of the administrators might think. And there was a great deal of enthusiasm, so I asked Brian to go ahead and to ask Highline if we could better understand what we need to do as an employer to get a Supported Employment Program going here. During this time, I also had received a referral from council to discuss Supported Employment Opportunities. So I think it all kind of worked out really well, and rather than my trying to tell you about how the program works, I'm going to now turn it over to Nikki and to Heather and let them do that for you. Okay?
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm Nikki Wagner. I'm an instructor at Highline Community College.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Evans, and I am Employment Services Coordinator at Highline Community College.
Now, we're going to tell you just a little bit about Highline and what sets us apart.
So I think, to start with, the concept of Supported Employment is defined by the state of Washington as a support provided to people who experience intellectual and developmental disabilities to allow them to obtain, maintain employment, and that's competitive employment. So it isn't a group of individuals who experience disabilities working together in an environment. It's an integrated approach to employment for people with intellectual disabilities. And one of the things that sets Highline Community College apart is our holistic approach. There are other organizations who provide Supported Employment Services for employers and their employees. However, Highline Community College, all of our qualified candidates have the same resources and avail themselves of the same resources that other community college students do. So applicants that we bring to you have -- may have been involved in student leadership at Highline Community College, in recreational events, student clubs. We like to think of our program as three parts: campus, classroom, and the workplace. So when you have candidates that come to you from a community college environment, that environment really does promote independence and professionalism, much more so than maybe someone who has experienced a couple internships in high school.
So now, I'm going to talk a little bit about the process, and how do we create effective partnerships that work. So the process is really important. We begin with internships with our students.
Thank you.
Both of us?
So we begin with internships, where we identify our students, what their skills, knowledge, and abilities are, what they're interested in, and then we move into a phase we call job placement, which means we're going out into the community and we're recruiting employers who we feel would have the jobs that would fit our student. And then we help with the application, the interview, and the hiring process. Oftentimes, businesses come to us and ask us to customize a job description by identifying certain tasks that our employee is really good at, and creating that into an entire job description, which would then free up other employees to do more senior types of work. We then provide the job coaching services, which are for the entirety of the employee's career, so that's at no cost to the employer, subsidized through the federal and state government. And that creates a really long-term partnership and an ability for us to help the employee grow and professionally develop, just like any -- Thank you. I'm going to just snag my notes. So Highline Community College currently partners with approximately 130 both private and public sector businesses. And of course, that number grows and flexes and changes, as does our employee base and our employer base. We also wanted to talk about our long history with public sector jobs. We've worked with a lot of cities, and you know, we talk about the city of Kent. Supported employment is well and alive in the city of Auburn, as well as the city of Seattle, of course. And a lot of times, we do very much what we've been asked to do, but to talk about doing today, where we work with across departments, across job descriptions, to really look at those tasks that are not core. So for example, if you have an engineer copying his plans and putting them into a database, that time that he or she is using to do that could be much more effectively done by a person who's a Supported Employee, allowing that engineer to focus on that core role, thereby developing a much more efficient department.
So I'm going to speak a little bit about using temporary positions as a way of onboarding employees, and that's a unique way to hire a Supported Employee. Any business that does that as their standard operating procedure, we would assume that they would also -- we would also help them with that process using a Supported Employee. We can code that as a paid internship or a working interview, which could allow the business to have a little bit of time to get to know the employee, to see if it's really a great fit for their business. However, we do stress that, you know, permanent positions, regular full-time positions, are our goal for most people, because this is a historically marginalized population that doesn't have access to benefits and regular jobs all the time. So that's our end goal. The benefits are clear, you get to know the employee, and you add to their resume and provide a reference. And the drawbacks are, it could make them feel unstable on the job, or create a longer training period, and doesn't always offer the same benefits.
Some of the questions that we often run into is, how are these positions funded? So where are we going to get the funds in my department to pay a Supported Employee? And unfortunately, there's no way for us to very succinctly answer that question. With different public and private sectors, it's done differently. Some departments create a job share, have an interdepartmental agreement. Unfortunately, we're not educated enough about how the city of Renton works within your budgets to give you a very succinct answer, but do know that it's done differently depending upon the entity that we're working with. So far, are there any questions or any areas you would like us to expand or expound?
Question?
Yes, I have a question. You mentioned that you're partnering with 130 different organizations. How many of those are municipalities, government municipalities?
I would say, off the top of my head, I can think of five that we are working with.
Five, okay.
Yes.
And then my other question is, what is the population of individuals who, you know, are having this challenge in terms of finding work in the workplace?
I could just answer that and say that 80% of the population nationally either knows someone with a disability or experiences a disability. And there was recently a DuPont survey study done that said that people who know or have a disability themselves prefer to bring their business to somewhere that employs people with disabilities. So while the population of people with disabilities is growing all the time, we could certainly look up an accurate estimate for you and tell you how many youths are leaving high school in this city with disabilities and get that information to you.
Okay, I'm just curious, in terms of what is the opportunity for finding employment? What's the challenge? What does the number look like? I know it's a daunting number, because anyone who doesn't have a physical, you know, disability, their challenge to find new work today. So obviously, it's got to be more desperate for this population as well.
Absolutely. You know, what I can tell you is that out of the 250 approximate students that we are serving, about 80 of them, 80 to 100 of them, are currently looking for work. Now, that doesn't mean that they've never worked. They could be in a transitional phase for work. And we have a placement rate of 80% within my program, or our program, the Achieve Program. So it is absolutely a marginalized population, and then if you take into account a person of color who has a disability, or a woman who has a disability, the number rises from there.
But certainly, we can look up the rate and get that to you.
Email it to you. Are there any other questions or areas we'd like us to expound?
So now, we're going to move on and give you some personal stories of people who have gotten jobs, both private and public sector, to help give you a better idea of what Supported Employment actually looks like through storytelling.
I think it also gives a really good idea of how the process can work differently for different organizations. So right here, we're looking at Joseph, and Joseph currently works at the city of Kent. He was hired in April of 2007 through a relationship developed between Highline Community College and the Department Head of Engineering. We talked a little bit about Joseph already, and how it was identified through these interdepartmental meetings and meetings with different managers. It doesn't have to take a long time, and y'all shouldn't have to do a lot of work to do it, that really, they had very highly-paid employees doing some fairly rote and routine tasks, and those were developed into a job description. And then we looked at our candidate pool, and it was obvious that Joe, who lives in Kent and loves computers and AutoCAD drafting, and really wanted that type of a job, was the absolute fit. One of the other reasons that we wanted to share this story, as in most of the stories that we're going to share with you, and there's only a couple, I promise, we won't be here all night, is that Joe really grew his responsibilities, his hours, and his duties. He started out as an office assistant and is now working 32 hours a week as a scanning technician one. Any questions? I'm also going to speak about Anjali. Anjali works at the Children's Museum of Tacoma, and we know that's a stretch, but we really wanted to highlight how different places hire differently. Almost all of the Children's Museum Play Guides, which is the title that Anjali holds, began as volunteers, and so that's exactly what Anjali did. Anjali began as a volunteer and then moved into her position as a play guide. Another interesting piece of Anjali's story is that she doesn't have a bundled task or a bundled job description. It isn't a coiling of a bunch of other duties. Anjali provides the same duties through her job as a play guide, as any other play guide, with supports from Highline Community College. She also has increased her duties and responsibilities. When she began working at the Children's Museum, she worked for one day, three hours per week, and she now works about 18 to 20 hours a week.
So I'm going to tell you about Alex and a sample of a private sector job, which was developed by a Highline Community College employee who wrote a cost-benefit analysis and submitted this to Walgreens. So Walgreens was using a street sweeping service, and they found that by hiring Alex, they could spend less and get a higher-quality product. And that is, he sweeps for them, one hour a day, four days a week. The way Alex was chosen for this position is, we went back and reviewed what candidates, again, would meet these needs of Walgreens, would enjoy being outdoors, would enjoy sweeping, and Alex rose to the top of that group. So additional responsibilities that he does would be folding t-shirts and watering plants. So this is a really good example of a really small job, and Joseph -- I'm sorry, Alex will be in the phase of trying to expand his duties through professional development with assistance from Highline Community College.
Our city of Seattle employee, one of them, Ryan, this -- it would be fairly similar. Although the city of Seattle is much bigger and a completely different municipality than the city of Renton, there are some similarities in how this may work, in that we met with the different departments we were invited in, much the same as we've been invited in today, to meet and to talk about what those duties were that could be bundled into a job description. We also wanted to highlight this story, because the city of Seattle usually does begin with temporary or seasonal positions in this area of hiring, and that's how we started. However, Ryan was a slam dunk, really, really a great fit for both the department and his duties, and within a couple days, within a week of him starting, they just moved him right to permanent. So he's working 20 hours a week as a fully-benefited employee. Any questions?
I will just add that the city employee, the city of Seattle, has been so impressed with this that they've decided to create another position for someone. So just a great example of that this program's really working.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, um, how many employees does the city of Seattle have?
Wow, Supported Employees?
Yes, Supported Employees.
My understanding that they -- their goal was 100.
And where are they right now, at this point?
They're at around 60.
At 60, okay.
And it's a long process, really making sure that you have the correct individual, that your employment service provider knows the individual, and knows the business and the department need enough to really make that fit. This isn't something that's going to happen quickly anywhere, let alone in a municipality where there's so many different things to consider.
I will add, though, that this has been a particularly exciting year for Supported Employment, as Microsoft has recently come out and stated they will have 200 jobs for people with disabilities in the next two years. And additionally, Starbucks has made a commitment to their Veterans Program as well. So even though we've been doing this for a while, it seems to now really be catching on nationally.
Good, thank you.
So our last example will be Devin, and Devin works for the city of Auburn, so a little bit closer to the size of Renton. Devin actually got this job from a different agency, not from Highline Community College, but from a partnership organization called Trillium. And Trillium got to know Devin and found that he needed to work in his community, that he did not have access to transportation, and he uses a motorized vehicle to get around. And so Devin's job was actually created for him specifically by the city of Auburn to deliver interdepartmental mail, and he drives up and down the streets of Auburn, and you might see him out there, because he does wear a sign and have a flag, because he's very proud of his job, and everyone waves to him when they see him. And again, this is a really great example of a way to create a specialized role for someone with a disability. He works three hours a day, five days a week, and obviously delivers packages, sorts mail, uses all sorts of different assistive technology to be successful at his role. So having the long-term partnership organization has been crucial for this.
And I think that's all she wrote for us, guys. So we've been asking throughout, you know, if there were questions or other places that you'd like us to speak more to, and just like to end with that invitation again. We will email the number of people in -- probably, we probably could get even close to the city of Renton, but that experience disability within Renton, or who are affected, or know, or love, or are partnered with someone who experiences a disability. So we'll get that to you. Is there anything else that we can provide?
Final questions from council?
I've got one final question. I would also be interested in knowing how many, what is the total number of Supported Employees that you have been successful in finding employment?
Well, Greg, we've been doing this since about 1987, so is that the number that you want?
Well, let's just say within the last year.
Last year, sure. Yeah, that's easy information to get.
Good.
We also wanted to thank Brian and Nancy for inviting us here tonight, because we really wouldn't have been able to come if it weren't for them, so thank you.
You're quite welcome. I just wanted to let you know what we look at as the next steps. Obviously, I have talked to administrators and said, "Well, what do you have in your department?" And we all kind of go, "Well, gee, I don't know what I've got," you know? It's hard to figure that out. And as I said, this isn't -- we don't want this to be made-up work. We want this to be real work, we want it to be developmental, you know, so people can grow in it. And so our next steps are really to brainstorm with one another, to see what kind of tasks there are in either a particular department, or, you know, as they talked about, bundling work to be done, but then you have to think about all those issues, which include, you have to have a supervisor here on, you know, onsite that they're going to work with, so how is all of that going to work? And then, of course, the big issue will be money, and how will we find, you know, the money? The nice thing, or one of the things about these, these jobs tend to be a little bit the lower level, so we're not looking at, you know, having an engineer, as they said, doing their own xeroxing or scanning and things like that. So we still have a ways to go, but we are, you know, it is definitely on our priority list, and we are moving forward, so.
Very good. Council, I do have a report. I'll just read it real quick. It says, "The committee at the Hall received a request from Andrew Harmon regarding a Supported Employment Program for the city of Renton. Upon referral to Human Resources, the committee was informed that HR had been working with Highline Community College to gather information for such a program. Heather Evan and Nikki Wagner from Highline made a presentation outlining how the program works and the benefits to both the city and individuals with developmental disabilities. Nancy Carlson, Human Resource Administrator, will continue to work with departments to see if the city can fashion positions that will work for the program. No further action is needed by the council at this time." I'll go ahead and sign, and thank you very much for a very illuminating and inspirational presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we've got a full agenda tonight, so we'll move right along to the City Center Community Plan Annual Report, and I'll ask that, I'd like to try and get this wrapped up in like the next 15 to 20 minutes, if possible.
Oh, they loaded the door. Good evening, members of council. My name is Angie Mathias, and I'm a planner here at the city of Renton, and I've had the honor and privilege of working with the City Center Community Plan Advisory Board over a little bit longer than the course of the last year, and we've all been working very hard, and this is the first community plan that the city has engaged in, and therefore the first advisory board, so we're breaking new ground. Tonight, we have Brian Van Houten and Jim Stanek here with us to give you an annual report, as adopted as part of our bylaws. We also have George Daniel here in the audience, who's also a member of our advisory board, and I know we're on a time crunch, so I'll just turn it over to him. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good morning.
Hold it now.
Yeah.
Good evening, my name is Jim Stanek. Been a resident in downtown Renton for about 16 years now. Hard to leave, because everything's so close to get to, walk to the Safeway all the time. Appreciate Greg Taylor recommending that I take part in something like this. Appreciate you folks for starting these advisory committees. I think we all know that downtown is a priority for development, and we have had about 17 or 18 members. We've met about seven times, six to eight times. You all have a copy, I understand, of the half dozen or so proposals that we're trying to prioritize. These are short-term, one-to-year things that we think will help revitalize the area. I know that the downtown has been an up-and-down story for quite a while, and I think what we're looking at as an advisory committee is bringing some things that are good from the standpoint of ease and -- pull it back a little bit from the mic.
There you go.
Some things that obviously wouldn't cost too much, but would stimulate some interest, and I think if we had to put it in one word, it would be getting more pedestrians down there. I've seen what some other cities have done, and it's definitely doable here. I think we also have a, as a committee, we also believe that there's no reason why downtown can't be revitalized and have its own niche, so to speak, of attracting people. A lot of people think it's impossible because of what's going on at the Landing. I don't think any of us believe that at all. I do think one of the keys is, you know, what makes us unique as a city, and what can, how can we use that? And I think there's a great diversity of people and cultures here, and I think that is something that can be used, possibly to develop some sort of a market downtown as a stimulus to draw people. I'm a cyclist, I was, I'm retired, recently retired, but I was a bicycle commuter, so I know the need to make all these trails connect through the downtown area, and we've had some interesting discussions, things like turning two-way streets into one-way or vice versa. I don't know that we came up with any solutions to that, but those are some of the things that were on the agenda. We can go through this quickly, as far as what you have in front of you there.
You might be able to just, does a microphone have a function to just turn it on, or does it have to?
You need to hold it down?
You don't need to hold it down.
You don't have to hold it down.
I don't think so.
Maybe if you turn it over, there's always on, always off.
[laughing].
There you go. Fixed. Thank you. Interestingly, we are an advisory committee. We're kind of winning it here, because this is brand-new, we're the first one, and I think we've put together an interesting list there, a variety of things that can help, everything from signage to making it more pedestrian-friendly, to getting some sidewalk café spaces available, things like that, connecting trails. I'm not sure where things go from here implementation-wise, because again, we're kind of doing this for the first time. We do want to be a strong part of that, I know that, and definitely get something happening here in the next year. We have got some good ideas there, I think. We're certainly looking for feedback and comments from you folks who know much more about some of the details of what can or maybe can't be done downtown in the near future. There's a lot of other issues that are overriding in the long term, things like, I understand, 405 is possibly getting widened, there's issues of can Route 900 be rerouted, and how does that affect downtown? So there's a lot of big things there that, you know, we're a transportation hub, we should be able to use that to our advantage, because people are coming through here. And one of the things that impressed me was this idea that if you even take away the rest of the city and just look at the downtown, what's considered the downtown area, it's really a diverse and thriving city in itself. You've got a major employer in Boeing, you've got a lot of different housing, you've got a lot of different businesses, and you've got transportation coming through here constantly in the way of automobiles and bicycles, because everything has to come through the south end here around the lake. So the people are here, the workers are here. I think it's just a matter of narrowing it down to maybe four or five stimulus ideas that can really get things going. I know the Landing, partly because of the economy, had some issues with filling some of their spaces for a while, and one thing that really kind of got over the hump was when World of Bears came in and set it up where the restaurants all around there could deliver food to their location, and I remember going by there in the summer, I couldn't believe all the people that I saw. Well, the fact is that just a few weeks ago, my wife and I walked through downtown on a relatively cold fall night, I think it was a Thursday night, it was not the weekend. I mean, from the Berliner, where there was a crowd, past the Irish pub, where there was a crowd, and go past Luther's Table, where there was a crowd, and every one of those places has live music more than one night a week. So there's things happening, definitely. And I originally come from northern Ohio, Cleveland, and believe me, the atmosphere of downtown, I know it has a reputation, it's a bad reputation, but the fact is that it's a much better starting point than some of the other places that I know about, so you've got some great things to work with there. Goals, summary, let's go over those. We've got eight things listed here. Create distinctive identity and improve visibility. Support diverse economic sectors. This comes in the play of emphasizing local businesses, I believe, instead of competing with national chains or some of the bigger businesses that come into places like the Landing. Improve access, circulation, visibility of the civic node, the library, the Liberty Park, the History Museum, are all close together, but hard to connect because of the streets and the way everything's laid out, making that more accessible and easy to get through. Protect and enhance neighborhoods. Both North Renton and South Renton have probably one of the few areas on the east side or south side where you have some stable neighborhoods that are working class, that are not going downhill quickly. neighborhoods that are working class, that are not going downhill quickly. Uh, I think we need to support that. Uh, there's been a threat of some high-rises going into some of those places and creating more density with apartments. I think we're, we're basically saying, take another look at that. Uh, improve connections into area. Um, again, uh, you know, I'm a big believer in this idea of connecting the bike trails because that will bring a lot of people into the city and through it that are already commuting or, or doing recreational riding. So that's one, one way to bring people in. Improve connections within area. You notice there's a theme here of getting all these things connected so people feel more comfortable getting around. Uh, finish trail connections, utilize this economic development, I've emphasized that already. Improve natural amenities and public access to them. Uh, there's a new library going in that's certainly going to attract some people. Uh, we had presentations, uh, I believe it was Elizabeth Stewart who, uh, is head of the history museum, explained how some of the possibilities are there of making an entrance that's not right on the traffic side, make it more friendly to get into because people go right by there. I, you know, I've lived downtown for sixteen years and it's only about half of this news ago that I finally went in there and took a look and it's an amazing place, it really is a pretty cool place. But it's not inviting from the outside, so, uh, changing some things like that makes a big difference. Uh, I think we're at the point of where do we prioritize some of these things? What do we do first? Uh, we did have a presentation from, uh, architecture firm Makers, I believe, from downtown, uh, they're working with the, the city and coming up with some ideas. Uh, I'm not sure where that's going. We hope to see some signage, some directional things happening soon. Uh, we're at a point now where we need some probably feedback from you folks after you look this over and, and see what, out of these eight items, what maybe is it one or two of these that are doable just in the next year around? Priorities, where are we? Priorities number one, update existing design standards for city center to ensure new development will fulfill the vision, help ensure more attractive, cohesive, and vibrant city center. These are getting into more details of the things that I just mentioned, the eight that we went through already. Uh, priority number two, create design standards for the public realm, standards for gateways, wayfinding, street trees, street lighting, pedestrian scale lighting, landscaping, furniture, utilities, public art. Uh, I know that, uh, the northern end of the lake, we're kind of the southern end of the lake version of that. Bothell is doing some amazing things up there with the rerouting of the state Route 522, I believe. Uh, it's a massive project. Uh, I would look perhaps to something like Bilyan, you know, they redid their library in City Hall to the west of Ambom, that little strip there of businesses, they, they put in some new lighting and some new parking there. It's a much smaller scale and yet made a big difference and attracts people, so, you know, that alone can make a big difference. Uh, priority number three, consider rezoning intact, single-family areas, South Renton neighborhood. That specifically, again, speaks to this idea of not letting these neighborhoods get overwhelmed with, uh, high-density buildings. Priority four, establish priority bike improvements consistent with the trails and bicycle master plan. I know the city has master plan set up for transportation and parks and bicycling. I know they have a master plan for the city. And, uh, again, it comes down to, let's work together and pick out some things that we can really get done here soon. Uh, initiate a sidewalk café case study. Uh, I understand there was some, uh, detail going on with that that may come to fruition shortly. Uh, complete a conceptual plan for the civic node, which of course includes Liberty Park, library system, uh, history museum, Cedar River, uh, many wonderful amenities all close together that are hard for people to connect to. Uh, next steps, monitor progress on work based on the 2013 priorities. Serve as key stakeholders representing the city's center, community, and provide essential feedback. Develop more knowledge of city processes and functions. Prioritize middle and long-term goals. Uh, we are responsible for middle and long-term goals also. Uh, this being the first actual annual report, obviously we're talking about short-term goals and what we can do with that and get the ball rolling and see what can happen there. That's kind of a summary. Uh, there may be some detail or questions you folks have with the report you have in front of you.
Counsel, have any questions? Good, um, good presentation. A lot of, a lot of great, great work has gone into this.
Yeah, and, um, so just to be clear, uh, the, a lot of the work that we did was work on prioritizing those short-term goals as Jim talked about. Um, and so that was, we spent a number of meetings just learning about what those were and working through, um, understanding how those things would play out. Uh, and then we brought those recommendations that, the six that we talked about here tonight to our planning and development committee, and they said, "Go ahead, start working on those. Um, please get started on those things." And so we have been working on those, um, and have been doing some things, uh, working on the sidewalk café stuff and some of those design standards. Um, we've started meetings with the South Renton Neighborhood Group to, um, engage that community and that sort of thing, so, um, that work has started. And, uh, we continue to meet and we'll work on, um, prioritizing more goals and bringing that back to you all as well.
Mr. President.
Hi. Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, thanks Angie and the City Center Group. Um, yeah, part of the bigger picture is that this will then keep building every year as another, uh, plan is completed, Benson and that type of stuff. So you guys in a few years will be getting nine annual reports and, uh, learning about what these different neighborhood groups and, uh, plan groups have, have been working on. And this was just the first one and we thought it was, uh, interesting and exciting and thought you guys would, would value, uh, hearing directly from them, so thanks for your hard work, guys.
Terrific.
Thank you.
And could Brian introduce himself real quick since he came tonight?
I think I know most of you. I grew up, I grew up for sixteen years next to Dawn.
That's too bad.
Yeah, we're sorry about that.
Moved here in nineteen eighty-four and then my wife and I bought a house in downtown Renton eight years ago.
Excellent.
Yep.
Well, thank you all. Thanks to everybody on this list and everybody that supported them for the hard work and, uh, such a high visibility. All these plans, uh, for all nine or ten of the neighborhoods are going to be important. This is probably the highest visibility one.
Yeah, there's a lot of, one thing that we've, that you learn real quickly is all the varied uses and the varied things that, and it's just, it is the center of our city.
Yeah.
And people come to it very, very frequently from all over the place.
Our hearts, so we appreciate your working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, you know, the, the Western Railway leaving and the American Draper leaving left a couple of huge buildings that people go by and really emphasize some of the problems downtown. And maybe that's a good stimulus in order to make something happen quickly instead of without that happening, so maybe that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thanks. Hey, and I, Counsel, I have a report for this. It's, it's brief but to the point. The Committee of the Hall recommends that the City Center Community Plan Advisory Board 2013 Annual Report be adopted. Um, looks like I have a consensus.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to go ahead and sign that. Okay, very good. Thank you again. All right, and with that, we'll move on to the third item on tonight's Committee of the Hall, um, and that's, uh, Councilmember Taylor reimbursement request. Um, I think, uh, Counsel has some background information on this, and I think Mr. Taylor, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you. Or should I give a little more background first?
Sure.
Okay. What, um, I guess I would just say is I was, um, I, I think some of us had some, some awareness, you were traveling to Washington DC, uh, through some confusion perhaps, um, I'm, I'm not sure exactly, but there was, um, uh, I know the Council liaison had requested some information about the trip and then I, you'd sent an email back to the Council liaison stating you had a scholarship for the trip, so no city funds were needed and there was no permission, um, requested or granted. Um, and then, um, and then, uh, after the, after the trip, it turned out, uh, not everything was covered and it put in receipts asking for coverage. And I wasn't quite sure what to do because I knew the policy said that, um, in order to, to cover the expenses, uh, we would have had to have arranged approval in advance. And I know from Counsel's actions before, the Council's made it pretty clear for overnight travel, especially to places far away as Washington DC, they wanted to have a, a voice in that. And so, um, with that, I, uh, since, since I hadn't approved it in advance, I hadn't been asked and hadn't done it, I couldn't sign that I had. And so that made it so that, um, finance department didn't know what to do with the, um, expense request. Um, I did notify Mr. Taylor that I was, uh, not really able to, uh, approve that. And then, uh, with that, he asked that it come into here. Um, I think the Council's been given, uh, policy and, um, I mean, as I look at it, it looks like for overnight travel, uh, advanced approval is sort of a fundamental part of the policy. So, uh, you know, I, disappointed that, that, I mean, I know it's disappointing for Mr. Taylor, uh, it's an unfortunate position to be in. Fortunately, some of your expenses were covered by the scholarship, the airfare, I understand, maybe the hotel. Um, but, um, with that, I guess I turn it over to you. I know you asked for this.
Sure, yes, and thank you for, uh, having it come here. I guess where I really want to start is, is, uh, that, uh, as you all know, I did send out an email last Friday to the full council stating that due to a personal matter that I would not be able to attend tonight's meetings. Um, and I asked if this item be rescheduled at a future Committee of the Hall meeting after December the second. But for some reason, Council President Corman, uh, chose not to allow my request, uh, to keep, uh, this item on tonight's agenda, um, and to proceed in my absence. And so I had to interrupt my personal matter to be here tonight and I thought that was worth noting. And, and I'm also, uh, I guess, set aback being that, um, we have multiple precedent for council members who bring things to a committee, uh, agenda, uh, and having, uh, new plans develop, being able to have, uh, and request, uh, a postponement of a meeting without any problem or hesitation, so I'm a little dismayed about that and I just thought that, that was worth noting. I want to also just say that, uh, I'm not in the, uh, in the highest, I'm not the highest spending council member, uh, nor the lowest. Uh, you all have reports in front of you, you could see what we've done. And I requested this report, by the way, just to, uh, give a visual in terms of what council expenses, uh, have, uh, taken place over the past couple of years or, uh, 2012 and year-to-date. Um, and, and I personally would not incur any, uh, expenses for the city that was not in the city's best interest. I want to just talk a little bit about the trip that I went to, which is, uh, same, same trip that I took last year. You may recall, last November, I became a member, a founding member of an organization called Local Progress. And Local Progress is a, uh, group of, uh, policymakers nationally. Uh, it's a national municipal policy network made up of hundreds of local elected officials from around the country and key allied organizations who are united by sharing a commitment to a strong middle and working class, equal justice under law, sustainable and livable cities, and good government that serves the public interest effectively. Local Progress seeks to build progressive infrastructure that will yield political and policy dividends for decades to come. And so, uh, and some of the things that we, you know, discuss, uh, during this trip, uh, has to do with economic justice, strengthening our neighborhoods, and civil and immigrant rights. So the merit of the trip, in my view, you know, is well worth, you know, the, uh, investment if the city were to take on and pay for it entirely. But I've been fortunate to leverage, uh, through a scholarship with this organization, about a thousand dollars, over a thousand dollars in, uh, sponsorship that they covered. I think my expense reimbursement, uh, request was for an additional night that wasn't covered and also some ground transportation. But I would ask you all, don't you think that my association with this group and the policies they promote has value for our city? And that could be taken as a rhetorical question. Going back to, uh, the confusion, as you stated, Council President, in terms of, uh, you know, how we got here, um, I was attending another conference, uh, called Revolution at the Weston Hotel. And again, this was a conference that the, uh, total registration fee was four hundred and ninety-five dollars. I was successful in getting a scholarship for four hundred and fifty dollars, um, leveraging just about the entire cost of that, uh, without the city having to pay any more than forty-five dollars for it. While attending this conference that took place, uh, from October the twentieth through the twenty-third, I had a conversation with Julia regarding my DC trip that was going to, uh, take place the following weekend. And I had mentioned to her that, uh, that I would be taking off on Thursday and I'd be gone over the weekend. And she mentioned that, uh, she, and, and you're right, I did send out an email, uh, announcing the, uh, the trip, uh, I believe it was on September the thirtieth. And your, uh, initial response was that you felt that, uh, you know, you felt that, I think Julia and you both thought that I was requesting and, you know, the city to pay for the entire trip. And that I had informed you to know that the trip was going to be paid for by, um, the Local Progress Group. But I had a conversation with Julia, um, during my Revolution Conference about, um, potential expenses for the DC trip. She emailed me the expense reimbursement paperwork and asked me to, uh, complete it, bring it in, uh, prior to, uh, my leaving to get approval, which I attempted to do. Um, I brought the paperwork in that had the agenda, uh, for the Revolution Conference, but it also had the agenda for the Local Progress, uh, Conference also that outlined the number of days, the meals that were being covered and those kinds of things. Julia wasn't in on that day. And so I, um, uh, flew out that night. I had already booked my trip. And by the way, um, the only, uh, I, well, I had already booked my flight and I was, I was on my way out of there. So, you know, Julia, I had a conversation with Julia, who is our council secretary, and as, as council members do, Julia helps all of us plan our trips. And so I was in communication with her. And I later learned that you were not a part of those conversations, uh, which surprised me because you had been involved in the earlier communication with the first email. And I didn't see that it would be a major problem in, uh, obtaining, uh, approval if there were any additional expenses.
The only problem is, I mean, I, I wasn't that involved. I would have been. I think Julia was trying to prompt you for getting that pre-approval, but your response came back that it was fully covered and so there was no approval necessary. And I think had, uh, had you, you know, instead asked for approval, I would have scrambled to somehow get council approval. But the, the affirmative response that no approval was necessary because you were going on your own expenses.
But one of the...
Eliminated our opportunity to do that.
Well, but, but, but I think where the confusion may have taken place on your part was that after that communication, I had, uh, that email communication that you were a part of, there was, uh, conversations with me and Julia about, uh, uh, potential expenses that we knew would exist. She and I had conversations about that. And she had asked me to give her an estimate of what those expenses would be. And I told her that, you know, it'll be ground transportation, there'll be meals that were not going to be covered. And at that point, that was all that I, I was aware of. And that is information that you probably don't have or you didn't have, but that in fact did take place. Now, when I did bring the information into, uh, Julia and she was not in on Thursday, she also was out on Friday. And, uh, once I arrived in DC and got my ground transportation secured, I attempted to call her on Monday when she was not available on Monday also. And so it was after I got back that I turned in my receipts. And then it was after I got back that I also learned that Local Progress would not cover the additional day that I ended up staying because that was the only time I could get my, uh, my flight out. My efforts to, uh, book my flights were entirely around trying to book the lead, most least-expensive flight arrangement since Local Progress was paying for the hotel stay and the flight, so, so that's... That's basically what happened. So I'm, I'm very surprised at the, and I'll just be blown about it. I was very, very surprised that, you know, the, uh, reaction of, from you, Council President, rather than having a conversation with me about some of this, because you, you were not in the loop throughout this whole dialogue that, uh, I had been having with our secretary, is that you, you and I didn't have a conversation, but the next thing I understood, I learned was that I was getting an email, uh, from you that had been, uh, vetted by the city attorney regarding, uh, my expense reimbursement request.
Well, and it, it wasn't, it wasn't that I was like trolling to, to find something to stir up, it was that I had been... It was that I had been told by finance that I needed to sign a paper which had said that I'd given preauthorization based on a majority of the council in agreement, and I couldn't sign such a paper. So, I, I asked the attorney what I would do under those circumstances, and the attorney wrote a memo back saying that effectively my, my hands were tied. That the policy says, "An employee must obtain authorization prior to overnight travel." And then it goes on and says, "Council members attending regional meetings, council members attending regularly scheduled and/or standing regional meetings within their committee assignment or otherwise previously approved by the majority of city council are representing the city officially and are eligible for reimbursement." And then it says, "Council members participating in other regional meetings, forums, and trainings are attending in an unofficial capacity on their own time and resources." And since I hadn't gotten a majority of the council and was in this dilemma where I was being asked to approve that I had, I just couldn't sign it.
And Council President, if I may, and I could understand that dilemma and that confusion, but I would have appreciated at least a conversation with you to try to understand the entire scope of what had happened. Because the whole spirit behind my efforts were to get and obtain that approval. I think you were, and I'm also unsure why you were not kept in the loop with my communications with our council secretary, Julia.
But I did.
Because had you, had you known about that, then you would have been aware that there had been some effort on my part to, and in fact, I have an email from Julia who emailed me during the time I was at the conference offering to complete the paperwork for me because she knew that I was tied up in this conference that was all-day conference from a Saturday through a Wednesday, and my flight would leave on the Thursday.
Yeah, but I did phone you, actually. I phoned you before this came to the council last week while I was still trying to figure out what to do with the expense report to let you know that I had a dilemma. And I asked Julia about every communication she'd had with you. And she basically affirmed my understanding that there hadn't been a preapproval and pulled up the emails that, where you had said it was going to be on the scholarship. And so, that, those are the, those are the conversations I had. There was nothing there that...
I beg to differ with you because my, I've had a conversation with Julia since my conversation with you. And she has confirmed that there was dialogue about potential other additional expenses. We did discuss that. And so, I'm a little perplexed as to why you are not privy to that same information.
Mr. President.
Mr. Zwicker.
The council policy has been explained and is very clear that to act on the city's behalf and then incur taxpayer funds, you need to ask before you go. And notwithstanding any emails to Julia or anything like that, or conversations that Randy did or did not have before or after, that was not brought to the council to decide if it was an appropriate use of taxpayer funds. It's, I mean, that's the first issue and the main issue, and that's what goes back to Larry's memo. We've had this discussion before, preapproval, to act on the city's behalf, you need preapproval by a majority of the council.
My response to that, if I may, Mr. President, would be that there was an effort to obtain that approval in a short window of time. And I would say that there was a breakdown in communication for that information to have been effective in eliminating the problem that we're facing right now. I also want to add that our policy of having one elected official judging other elected officials is problematic to me. It leaves a lot of room for political turmoil. We're all equal. We should all have equal access to the trips and trainings that we choose to take. And I would even go as far to say that I would like for us to consider revisiting our council policy on travel. And furthermore, since we do not rotate the role of council president, and the same people often get chosen repeatedly, doesn't this create somewhat of a monopoly of who gets to decide outcomes like this for certain elected officials?
Mr. Taylor, there's several topics there that I just want to just...
But it's a real, it's a real...
Well, I just want to point out that, that, you know, all of us have different opinions on the travel. I'm frankly pretty cheap when it comes to travel. In fact, I'll point out that I haven't traveled on the city's dime in 20 years of doing this job. Now, it doesn't mean that I don't care a lot about this city. I've gone to numerous conventions that have taught me more about this. It's just that I've, I've decided to, you know, I get paid a council salary, and I use part of my salary to cover visits with constituents and make my way to Seattle and make my way to Olympia. And so, I don't want anybody that's listening to you to get the impression that some of us are out there just traveling willy-nilly and that others aren't getting the chance. The fact is, I want everybody to be very responsible with the travel. I don't think that taxpayers want us to be taking a lot of trips. I think that we, there's, there's a lot of resources with the web, with, with books, with newspapers, we can learn a lot. I'm not saying that there's not value in face-to-face visits, but often, often the events that an individual council member may be interested in attending in Washington or Dallas or Las Vegas might in fact not have full council support. They might be quasi-political events, they might, they might not have taxpayer support. So, I think that we've kind of limited what we've done to National League of Cities and Association of Washington Cities, longstanding committees that have been, that we've been employing as lobbyists to help us. And, and so, some of these expenses are, as I look at this list of expenses, they're ones that council members have incurred in keeping with those policies, where they followed the policy, where they put in per diems that were equal or less than what the city allowed. And frankly, this, this trip we're talking about now doesn't fit any of that. And so, I wouldn't want anybody to get the impression that, that other council members are, are just traveling around on the, on the city's nickel.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
I'd like to give Mr. Person a chance.
Well, this really boils down to me as a policy issue. We have a council policy that applies to all of us. And you can take a look at my travel over my 14 years on the council, and it's nil for the same basic reason of Mr. Corman. This isn't a matter of, was it a good trip or was it a bad trip? That's not the issue. The issue is, was the policy, city policy followed the policy that we require all of our city employees to go through? So, so when we, as a council members, have to be held to a higher standard of obeying this travel policy than anybody else in the city. So, to me, we got attorney, city attorney's opinion that it didn't fall within policy. There's, there isn't a preapproval as required. Now, if we want to discuss how the preapproval goes in the future, but this policy, we discussed this policy a couple of years ago and went over it and over it and over it, and everyone on this council agreed to it. There was, it was adopted unanimously. So, to me, it's, Mr. Taylor, it has nothing to do with you, it has nothing to do, I mean, and then you get a memo, an email from you saying all expenses are covered. And then you put in, after the fact, that you didn't follow the policy. And I would do the same thing, expect the same thing of our city employees, of the mayor or the city attorney or anybody, that they have to follow policy. And there have been cases in the city where employees have had to reimburse when it wasn't preapproved. So, I can't sit here and say that you had preapproval.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I think it's clear that there was not preapproval given. That's not the question, that's not the argument that I'm making. My, my point that I'm making is that there was an effort being made to obtain that preapproval in a short window. And although I hear you echoing my very first email that took place on September the 30th, the sequence changed after that. And there was communication with our council secretary about other expenses. And I'm surprised that I'm not hearing any conversation from anyone here, particularly you, President Corman, and regarding that, because that conversation did take place. And so, you know, although I did not obtain that approval prior to the trip, there was effort being made to do that. And so, I'm a little perplexed as to the punitive and issue being made about this, especially being that, you know, I was successful in leveraging the majority of the cost for this trip.
Mr. ... Well, the trip was on October 24th, and you said your first email was in September 30th. There's 25 days in there to get approval. So, there wasn't a short time, in my opinion, there wasn't a short time for approval. I mean, I mean, you got almost a whole month to get hold, you could have got hold of any one of the council people if you didn't feel that the president was responding.
Can I respond to Mr. Person?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, so I notified you that I would be going on the trip on the 30th, but I still had to make reservations and make air, flight reservations and go through that process. I think I had notified you upon receiving the scholarship, and that gave me the window to go ahead and begin making the arrangements, which I'm not exactly sure when the date took place. But when the date took place, that triggered the return flight. And so, information wasn't entirely available on the date. One of the other elements also was looking at the agenda to determine, you know, what meals would be covered and what meals would not be covered. Folks, I think that we're making a real big issue out of something that, in my opinion, doesn't best serve our residents. I think that the people here know that the trainings that I go to and that I have gone to historically add value to the job that I do here as a council member. And I think I've been very consistent in doing that over the years. And it has benefited me to the degree that I believe that I offer the type of critical thinking that really benefits our residents. I would even say that as individual council members, you know, we, we have the ability to think differently and do things differently in this regard. Although there are some of you who spend none, no money on travel, you don't travel at all, I think that would be you, Randy, and you, Don Person, there still are others of us that do it in varying degrees. And, and I think that's good. I think that we should seek training. I think we should seek education to increase our ability to do our jobs. I would also add that looking at the 2012 expense report here, that there are two other council members who have spent more money than I have in travel. And this current year in 2013, there are several council members who have spent three times more than I have on travel expenses. So, so when I say that, because I don't understand the issue that's being made here. And that's why I made the comment that to have an individual to oversee individual council members to get approved for expense reimbursements like this creates political turmoil, in my opinion.
And I, and I just want to be clear, I'm not passing any judgment on, on which travel's more important. And furthermore, I want you to know that I, you might have misunderstood what I said. I do travel, I do go places. It's just that I don't do it on the, I don't ask the taxpayers to pay for it. Now, really back to the issue at hand, I'm glad we're talking about a relatively small amount. I'm glad that, that most of it was covered by a scholarship because this is not intended to be punitive. This is really intended to protect the position of the city when we get audited, and we will get audited. And to show that the auditors that we won't suddenly incur, you know, who knows, 10,000, 50,000, who knows how much in expenses a city could incur if council members just started traveling anywhere they wanted to. Now, that's not what happened here, but, but the amount is small enough that it's, it's, the amount we're talking about is about half, half of a month's city council salary. And, and frankly, it seems like since there wasn't preapproval, probably the best way to handle it is to just, you know, just go ahead and appreciate that that's part of what your salary covers, and, and then we move on. The problem is, is if, as soon as we say, okay, well, we'll, we'll ignore a policy in this case, the auditor comes back and says, well, what is the standard then? You know, if, if a department head wanted to do the same thing, would we ignore that policy too? I mean, I don't really know where it goes from there.
At the risk of weighing in, I will, just to that extent, that we read the policy to say an employee must obtain authorization. It's not should, shall, it'd be really good if they could. So, even if a trip is 100% reimbursed, any employee who's traveling on overnight travel must obtain prior approval, must fill out that form, even if that form shows that they're going to get reimbursed. The second thing I'd just say is to add to what you just said, Councilman Corman, this council has responsibility to approve and make decisions on hundreds of millions of dollars a year. But I will tell you, in my, in my experience, what brings down council members more than any other thing is the inappropriate use of travel expenses. And the auditors drill down on that, they will look at our policy and whether or not we're following our policy. That is what they'll look at. Out of all of the hundreds of millions of dollars that we spend, they are going to focus mostly on our travel. And so, and we have had comments made in the past about whether or not employees have been following that closely. So, as staff at least, we follow the policy.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Corman, are you suggesting that this is a, an example of inappropriate use of travel expenses?
Mr. Taylor...
I, I, I need, I need, Mr. ...
I'm simply saying it wasn't preapproved by this council.
But that's not what our city administrative officer just said.
The, the policy just says it has to be preapproved, and I can't sign anything that says it was preapproved when it wasn't preapproved.
And we keep going back to that, but yet you ignore the fact that there was an effort in process to obtain that approval that somehow got missed in terms of the communication.
I wasn't, I wasn't part of it, and certainly a majority of the council wasn't part of it, so.
Okay.
And, you know, like I say, I'm sorry it worked out that way, but as Mr. Person said, I think the council liaison was trying to, trying to, you know, find out if she needed to bring it to our cognizance and concluded that it, that there was no expenses there that needed to come to our attention.
Our council liaison was in conversation with me about the potential event of expenses. And on the day that I came in to meet with her to turn in paperwork, she was off that day, the following day, the following Monday. And so, there was opportunity for lack of communication, and that's what we have. I, I don't want to wrestle with this thing. I thought I would bring it to the council because, quite frankly, it's frustrating when all of my trips and events that I like to attend, that they get, they fall under this kind of scrutiny. And as I, and as I stated before, you know, I find it even more objectionable when, you know, these decisions are being made by one elected official towards another elected official. I think that we're all equal in a certain sense. And for that reason, I think that we may want to think about redressing our council policy on this travel expense as it currently exists.
Okay, then, Mr. Zwicker.
Mr. President, thank you. I just, sir, I got to address this one council member stuff. A council member has no power whatsoever. A majority of the council has the power of the council and acts on behalf of the city. No single council member says if you can get to travel or not. That's why you bring it to regional issues, a committee of the whole, and a majority of the council can send you. So, a single council member doesn't get to choose what he goes to, a single council member doesn't choose what you don't get to go to. A majority of the council decides. And that's just like council presidency. It's not a rotation. A majority of the council picked a new council president, and a new council president pro tem. A majority of the council, not a single person.
And I would just add to that, that, you know, our, our prior precedent has been rotating council presidency. And somehow, we have stepped away from that. And by doing that, we do limit equal access and opportunity for all council member, council members. And I would, I would, I would offer a different perspective towards my colleague's opinion here about how decisions are made regarding our expenses. And I think I'll just leave it right there for right now. See, we're running short on time. What I'll do is I will go ahead and take the responsibility for covering my expenses. But I thought it would be important to just bring this to the council to see what their thoughts and feelings were about it.
Okay, well, appreciate that, Mr. Taylor. And again, I, none of us are making a judgment about the trip, and I'm glad you were able to, to learn and to advocate for cities, and I don't want any of that to be lost. don't want any of that to be lost in this discussion. So, any final comments? Or with that, Committee of the Whole is adjourned. Thank you very much.